I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mind that order will be here. We'll go over first the, has all the members had an opportunity to read the minutes?
Agenda approved.
Okay, agenda approved. Does everybody have an opportunity to look at the agenda as it was sent out? Okay, we'll entertain a motion regarding this agenda.
The commission to approve.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor of that, and all who raise your right hand. Next, we have the approval of the minutes, which is on section four. Have, just may I look it over if you'd like? We'll entertain a motion to deal with it if you...
Motion to approve the papers, council meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion second to approve, all in favor of that, and all who raise your right hand. Okay, we have the night eighteenth minutes. We'll entertain a motion if anybody's had a chance to look at it.
Motion to approve the night eighteenth, fourth session.
Okay, we have a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Have a second, so all in favor of that, and all who raise your right hand. Okay, next we get to department reports on this matter here.
Y'all went through that too quickly. I wasn't prepared. Okay. All right, financial report. Included with this report is the statement of revenue and expenditures due May 31st. These numbers were reconciled last night, so they should be up to date. Just to let you know that the report that I emailed in the council packet is going to be a little bit different. The one you have in here is the one that was reconciled behind this paperwork here. Take note that Pickens Plus Two is not current because we have not yet received the statement to go ahead and do the reconciliations on that. I just say, take it home, take some time to look over it, and we can discuss it in further detail at the work session. And I'm going to make it a point to include one of these reports in with the court report on a monthly basis, so you can see month to month the changes that we've made. Any questions there? And next is maintenance. The rain has kept Mr. Fawcett busy with mowing around the city, but he is doing his best to keep up with it. We have gotten a ton of compliments and thank yous as to the great condition of the baseball field despite all the rain. Mr. Fawcett has gotten and painted the wood to make the needed repairs to the decks at City Hall, but has not gotten the chance to do the installation yet. I told him he might want to save the wood and build us an ark instead with all this rain that we've been having. But it's just some minor repairs for railings that got kicked off at the one that's on the side there and in the back. Some railings were, I guess, kicked off, and there's a board that split really bad, and we want to fix it because it's a safety issue. And, I mean, granted, the Marble Festival was not until October, but that is the way that they use, the tourists used to go ahead to go over to the second part of the tour. And we want to make sure all that looks good and refreshing is in good shape. The fans for the maintenance building are on order and will be installed as soon as they are received. Sanitation. We seem to be having an increase in new sanitation accounts, which I attribute to the changeovers that have been occurring with other local companies. I made some phone calls to try to get to the bottom of it, and the Pickens County residents now have no companies which handle recycling. Santac purchased their curbside service from North Metro under the stipulation that they would continue recycling for their residents. However, Santac sold their Pickens County accounts to Malden that does not do recycling. Bad news for them, good news for us, because people would much rather pay our rates and have our service if they're not going to have recycling. So I'm noticing an upswing. Just this week I opened three new accounts. So that's positive. The city dumpster run-off was a huge success. Over nineteen tons of trash was removed from the city as a result of this effort. The total cost to the city was $1,592.22, but it was well worth it. I mean, we could have spent more than that on a trash complaint trying to get one person to clean up their yard.
They couldn't do that and follow the year too, and follow approaches because of...
Yeah.
Now, let me ask you, does this 1592 include that last dumpster?
Yeah, it included the whole thing.
Was it four or two, like the others were?
Yes. Yeah. So, because there were some last minute people that missed the weekends that called, and I was like, well... You know, I said, "They're coming any minute now." So I had a couple of people just hurry up and run up, bring a couple of truckloads full and fill it up, so...
That was three dumpsters.
Four.
Four.
Yeah.
Have you driven around town? It looks like up there on the backside of the mountain on the one-way street up there, they've done a good job cleaning up that building. They tore down the fairing. It looks like there's some improvement around the city on that drive.
And a lot of residents have thanked, you know, said that they appreciate it or whatever have you, that, you know, they, to see that we're trying to help them means a lot to them, you know, to try to clean up.
Derek says we restored his house down here, Miss Jordan's old house here.
Yeah. There's a lot of investors that are interested in buying these homes and restoring them, particularly because this one over here that they restored has done so well. It's this one right up the street.
One has a contract on it.
Yeah, it was listed for $149.9, and everybody said there's no way they'll get that. And they had a bidding warrant. I think last I heard, the bid that won was $195.
This one right up the street?
Yes.
It's like right across. Yeah. And my daughter looked at it. They pulled it up online, and that agent was like, don't even ask her that. She's like, "They're already all over. The prices are already jacked up."
Yeah, because all the people that, the bidding war were people that were like from Cobb and far away. They're sick of, they don't want to be in their neighbor's lap all the time. So now they're looking to come up this way, which we anticipated would happen. Now that everything has been overdeveloped in those areas, they want to come up here and be in the country, and they like these older houses being fixed up. It's that shabby chic thing that HGTV has going on.
Sorry to interrupt you, there. Go ahead.
It's no problem. The June 15th work session is going to be Thursday, June 15th at 7:00 PM. The public hearing for the budget is scheduled to occur at this time. I would also like to discuss budget amendments for the current fiscal year, although I spoke to the auditor, and we can technically wait until July to do those if we want, depending on what the council would like to do. I think we should also tackle, perhaps try to tackle finalizing the Cherokee County Splast Agreement. I have not gotten a cold hard deadline for our version of the agreement to be submitted to the county yet, but I've been told by other cities that it tends to come out of the middle of nowhere. So the sooner we get on it, the better. It's kind of like, yeah, we want it, and we wanted it three days ago. And let's see, if there's anything else that you all would like to see on the agenda, let me know. And then last but not least, the security camera equipment is on order and should be installed shortly. The gentleman who is working to install the cameras came out one more time now that all the trees seem to be in full bloom and with his radios to make sure that our original plan that I had presented to you all would work in terms of signals and radios and whatever have you, and it seemed to still be equally as effective. So we're good to go. He just didn't want us to order equipment and then it not work though, you know.
If you talk to Evan, give him our compliments on the improvement here on the area down below us here.
Yeah.
Obviously took quite a bit of work. How many days were there?
It was Friday morning. He said he started at seven, and then he did up until about seven at night. And then it was Saturday. They finished by around, goodness, when was I up here? I think they finished by around two or three o'clock in the afternoon on Saturday.
That's big and proud.
The ballpark called him up and said, "We have a whole lot of dirt that we need to get rid of, you know. Do you have any place to put it?" And Evan was like, "Aha, I have a great place to put it." So, because we initially called around to get dirt to fill that lot in, he was like, "Yeah, no, mm-mm." So it was for him.
So they just hauled it up here?
They needed to get rid of it, and so they said, "We'll bring it, we'll haul it, we'll dump it for free. All you need to do is find something to do with it." So he got his equipment out there and did that.
Correct.
It does. It looks really nice.
Okay. Anybody get...
Question. Tina, you asked on the budget amendment for the, the budget amendments for the current fiscal year. I just soon see sooner than later.
Okay. Like I said, it was just one of those, we can go ahead and do it. I just talked to the auditor to make sure, and she's like, "As long as you do them before I get there to start the audit, you're good to go." But I'm with you. I'd rather get it done and not have to stress out and worry about it.
I'm going to be out town June 15th. That's our anniversary for today.
Well, you guys could come here and celebrate your anniversary at a council meeting.
Rescheduling. We rescheduled it for the meeting for Kelsey.
We could accept, well, I mean, the budget hearing I already advertised.
I already advertised.
Because we had to have a certain, had to be advertised by a certain time, so I went ahead. But if you want to move the rest of it, we can have, but the week after that, I'm in Savannah for a court hearing.
Is that on Thursday?
No, not necessarily.
My thing is, the limit we have, I think, is where our attorney can attend.
Depends on when y'all are looking on schedule and it, but the budget advertising is definitely, that probably needs to stay because that's very specific time frames.
That, and it was very, it's expensive because I had to advertise that in the regular section of the paper and both things and whatever, so to redo that would be...
Right, well, and we don't necessarily have to approve it when it...
No, you can approve it then. That's the public hearing.
Okay. Okay. We'll wait until we come back to approve it.
That's just a chance to listen to the public express their concerns.
We get an notice that's inserted by Mr. Havlin, information on the powers and duties of city manager and mayor as a follow-up from the previous meeting. What's the, your concern, concern, Mr. Havlin?
That was actually in the public comment section. I don't know if it was Paul Feldman or...
Lamar.
Or whoever it was, but they asked a question about what's the powers of the mayor and the city manager. The city attorney didn't have an answer. That's because you would have been, you would have had the answer. He wasn't there, so it wasn't fair because he would have had the research. So Jeff told me, "I want to give you this assignment to make sure that the council has this information." No, they didn't really give me the assignment. I just wanted to get an answer to it because it was a good question, and it wasn't resolved. This is just copied directly right out of the chart.
Off of Unico, before I got mine.
Okay, so do you want to address that, or do you think it needs to be addressed? It's in black and white.
It's just information.
Yes.
The question was answered very well at the time.
Okay, next we have a discussion, possibly both, on the bid package from Mr. Halbert, the Maxus Engineering, and has prepared for the drains work on Cherokee Avenue. Have you talked to Mr. Halbert, Tina?
Via email only. He's a tough man to get a hold of right now. I guess he's got a lot of jobs. Right now, he's on vacation till the 12th, which is why he couldn't make it. I am trying to get him to be here only 15th to answer questions. I can't, I'm not going to say yes because I don't want to, I mean, I don't know, you know. But he, I mean, it's basically been email, going over this. Is a lot of, a lot of technical stuff, obviously, and the pictures are tiny and microscopic. I needed to get a new prescription of glasses trying to make sense of this. But he did go ahead and send us over larger copies for everyone to look at, and I'll keep them up here if anyone wants to come and look them up.
That's pretty, not really complete as far as location of the drop boxes and things like that. I mean, you know, there's a, the exact dimensions of the drop boxes are not there.
Yeah. I did notice information was missing. That's why I wish that, you know, when I email back and forth with him, that I think that he really needs to be here because, you know, that's, we need to be... He said something about making a conference call, but how are we all going to get together on a conference call? I think it's much easier for us to be face to face and discuss and say, "This is what we want, this is what we don't want," to give him an idea. He said that I could speak to you all, and if y'all could give me a list, I can then email him the list. But this is, you know, it makes it that much more complicated to get this thing done and on a roll here.
We need to get our eyeballs out of ball.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, that was my...
I agree too, but he's got to get his eyeballs in here.
That's your job, Tina. Get his eyeballs in here.
I was thinking about, I don't know if he's a coffee man, but I was thinking about buying them with some Starbucks or something. I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to investigate doughnut something.
We keep putting this factor in particular off up there as far as, you know, the simple idea of putting some drainage.
Well, and the whole project, I think we just need, I mean, the whole thing needs to get done. I was speaking to Jeff about that, about what he had, information so far on getting what we need to take care of this over here so that we can, you know, we're having enough trouble getting this started, but I don't want another year to pass before we get the second part on tenis cell started. So if y'all give me the go-ahead, then I can give Laura or him, Laura will be, can tell him to go ahead and start working on the legal aspects of it because we're going to need... What was it? Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry. I have so many things going through my mind right now. We're going to have to get easements to take care of that. So, I mean, that's not that we're going to necessarily tackle it, but he can start the legal aspects and anticipate that he needs direction from the council to do so, so that he's not...
Well, the direction the council has given him is to come up with a usable plan for the drainage.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the attorney. I'm sorry.
As far as acquiring the easements that would be necessary.
Yes, they're really easy, so we all...
I was under the understanding that for some future potential project, there's an easement.
Yes, well, the Caso Avenue part that's over here by the branch. When I was speaking to Jeff about, you know, he was going over the logistics of the speed bomb set and whatever have you, the different methods, because I had sent him the copy of the bid package as well to look over and get his legal advice on. He wanted to know if, we wanted him to go ahead and start with the easements so once we get this started, we're not waiting another year to go ahead and take care of this, he can start working on the legalities in terms of this project as well. And that's something, since he couldn't be here, he asked me, the council wants him to start on that to let him know and hope it starts, or hope get Laura started.
Well, in speaking with him on this, obviously, we don't want to go knocking on doors and trying to acquire easements unless the project is actually imminent, so, yes.
So you want to wait?
I mean, it's at the council's direction. We can certainly, we don't want to actually approach people unless this is actually something that's happening.
Which of the properties will, will he need easements besides the one off in Oak where the utility building is?
That's the only one.
That's the one.
That's the only one.
Yeah, that's the issue because of that pipe that was put in there that wasn't by somebody that had the property before or whatever, had to put something in there. I think that's the issue. That, and something goes under their, their metal storage building, if you were saying.
I wonder if that house is still in foreclosure.
I haven't. Well, now, the Cherokee foreclosure notices are so broad that I don't look at those. I mean, I usually look at everyone.
That's big.
Yeah, but I think that it's going to be, it's got property in Cherokee too, though. It hasn't been in Pickens, you know. I check that every, every week because it's, it's not that big a chore, but...
Last I knew, it was in, but they hadn't done anything, they hadn't moved forward, so I don't know.
So what kind of direction do you want, Tina?
Just basically, obviously, it's, this is not complete. Knowing that you all do, because, I mean, I was kind of speaking, I was making under the assumption that you all really wanted to see him face to face. That was my opinion as well. I think we really do need him in here. So if, if that's what, that's the direction I need, that we need him in here, we need to see him, I'll just let him know that it's a must. We can't do this conference call thing that we, in order to move this forward, we really need face to face meetings, so...
We have to set up a special meeting.
Yeah.
Does everybody agree, other than Vegas vacation? Now, that's all the vacation you've got planned at the end of the day. The rest of us, do you have any races or anything like that?
Yeah, they're on the weekends.
When you go over there at Rhode Island, when the flight company got hit? On the number eight turn this weekend. Okay.
Like I said, many of y'all want to come up here at some point in time and look over the bigger picture without a magnifying glass. There's more information that you might like to see, and just have questions ready for him so when he comes in, we can, a checklist of, you know, this is what we want to see, or what we don't want to see, or what's missing. And if y'all want to just give me, you guys can ask your own questions, or you can give me your information, and I can type up a nice little list.
We're looking at August or September, right now. Yes, Mike.
So you got a direction to try to get him to show up at a meeting here? And, but what about the direction to the attorneys to begin pursuing it, or do you want to, or don't you?
I mean, if y'all want to hold off on that, I can, because we don't know when exactly. I mean, I thought the council had decided they wanted to do Cherokee Avenue before Caso. So if that's the case, then we need to make sure we get that done first. And then maybe the way to go would be, once we get that started, then to go ahead and take care of it because it'll actually be in motion, and we're not making assumptions of what it was for.
I think that's, what we need to do is just get some results.
Yeah.
And show some results.
Not if our order moves along pretty fast.
It shouldn't take long.
Should take a little days.
Yes, Mike.
Mayor, can I go back to city clerk's report number five? I had a question I forgot to ask, Tina.
Certainly.
Go ahead, sir.
Tina, on the MSSA, the governmental agreement.
Oh, municipal services agreement?
Yeah. What's the status on that?
I never got, and that was my fault at the last, it was supposed to be at the last work session. I wanted to get y'all's thoughts, opinions. Remember I said, "Take it home and take a red pen or a pencil and mark them all up"? I never did ask you all for those back. So if you could get them to me in the next couple of weeks, then maybe we can put that on the work session as well.
Could we get kind of a hard date if it gets something resolved there, get it started?
If, the sooner I can get the information back from you all so I can, so Jeff and I can comprise a list of our wants, needs, and questions to go ahead and take to Cherokee County, the sooner we can meet with them. So if you all want to go ahead and, I would say, by the meeting, by the work session, which is next Thursday, a week from Thursday, on the 15th, the way this month fell, I think. If y'all could just bring, if you need another copy, let me know. I can make you another copy of it. And then we can, I can go ahead and comprise that list, like I said, with Jeff, and then we can move forward from there and at least see if they're willing to budge, you know, in that way.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Okay. We need to...
So in conclusion on the bid package, it's, we were, definitely we want to arrange a face to face meeting. If need be, we can arrange a special meeting and hold off on the Caso Avenue project for now.
If need be, we're flexible as far as a meeting with him, but, you know, with the amount of money we've already got tied up to this project, I think we definitely need to have a meeting.
Yeah.
And, you know, like if we advertise, I'd say we're looking at September now. Might be able to get it in July.
We thought we'd get a list of like the times he knows he is eligible to be here and kind of plan accordingly. Just because I think he's, you know, he's saying one thing and then, you know...
Well, I mean, well, that's what I told him, but I'll just make sure, let him know, you know, the ball's in his field. That he'll give us a list, because he asked me for a list of meetings and times, and I told him, you know, sent him over the meetings and told him that we could also do a special meeting just to let me know, so...
Alrighty. We're needing to discuss a new business, is discuss and vote to approve and purchase a fuel tank for the maintenance park. Now, this is the fuel for the tool cat, which is diesel as compared to gasoline at the mowers and the, the tractors and everything. Well, the, the, all of them diesel. All the tractors and everything are diesel, even the mowers are diesel. But the city truck is a gas engine.
Yeah, because we have gone to, like, Ricky had bought, he's got a whole store of those big giant, you know, gas cans. But the problem is, it's, you have to take them up there, you fill them all up, they slop all over the place. You often wind up spilling more than you're using. And we don't want him taking the tool cat up to the Tate four-way because we don't want him to put unnecessary wear and tear on it. So this is something that I thought would be a wise investment, and I also, I'm going to skip down here, I'm sorry. I checked with the, I checked with the auditor, and she said that it will fall, it would fall into a splast expenditure as it is considered to be transportation equipment. So that we could pay for it with splast. I thought I was going to have to take it out of the general fund, but it falls in that category to where we can cover it with those splast funds. So these are just, I had called some other municipalities and counties and just stopped random people at the gas station who have those kind of things on the back of their truck, and then asked questions, as well as Ricky, and asked questions. And it seemed like unanimous vote was, they had gotten theirs from Tractor Supply because they found out they had the best prices. And I had also looked online, and I, because I thought they were way more expensive than that. But these are just some, some random things that Ricky had, had found. The most of the things, they sell the tank, and the pump is extra. So I thought he would have liked the tank with the toolbox combo. He said, "But honestly, the way it's set up wouldn't be..." I mean, he'd like a toolbox for the truck, you know, if he's going to move it around, he said. "But the way that is, it's not conducive to getting to the tools right anyway." So he said he'd prefer more of a tank that would hold more fuel. And so the ninety-seven, the ones with the asterisks next to them were his choices. And when I looked into them rating-wise, quality-wise, and whatever have you, they seem to have good ratings and things of that nature as well.
And of course, we can, we could shop for lower pricing fuel too when we start to fill that thing up.
Yeah, exactly. See, and we'll have the ability to be able to do that then as opposed to kind of being at the mercy of trying not to lug all these cans up.
We can set a can up at Jones's and get like sixty cents a gallon for the off-road fuel. Jones Old Companies up there in Jasper, Tina?
Okay, Jones.
Hood Road.
James, if you'd like to, you know, you know up there and everything, if you'd like to, to take the lead on that and come up, whatever, come out. I don't think they're needing the technical work or anything. Of course, they will need a sales tax exemption.
Correct.
And this is going to be, this is all off-road. Would you think they would need the fuel cap? So we save the, the fuel tax. So we definitely need to do that.
That's the output we need.
That ninety-seven totally be good. That's what we've got in common, right?
Because I would give them a couple of fells.
That's what I guess.
Yeah, but I mean, he said, "Look at the hundred gallons." I said, "Well, why don't we just go for the hundred gallon?" He's like, "Well, for the price difference for four gallons." He said, "I'd rather just fill up ninety-six gallons and get a four-gallon can."
The L shake tank is the problem. You know, that would take up, you know, if we, if we look, of course, now James is zeroing in on trying to get our, our Zuzo truck going again. And if we don't, you know, we need to take the bed off that truck and put it on this new truck anyway, so... But now that's going to be, you know, conceivably, we could, even by using it as a dump truck, we could have a frame built around the tank and put some sheet metal, I mean, some, some steel sheeting on it where we can make it, where we can still use it as a dump truck if we, if we need it to. It would take extra effort to get that fuel tank and pump protected if we use it as a dump truck.
And then the benefit to this here, obviously... And then the benefit to this here, obviously, is that it's an automatic nozzle, so it shut, A, it pumps more gallons per minute, like the GPMs, I'm sorry, are apparently gallons per minute, I should have spelled that out. And it stops, so like, if you're in there pumping, it doesn't, you know, you don't, it doesn't just come, come overflow, it stops automatically, it has a sensor on it, as opposed to the manual.
Yeah, but 15 gallon minutes, a whole lot of flow, wouldn't you think, Dave?
Yeah.
I mean, that would save you. Fill, fill a lot more tank up like that. And, yeah, I'd probably go with a, with a manual nozzle at eight gallons per minute, because if you don't, you're going to have some spillage there. Even 15 gallon flow is quick.
I think what she's saying is the automatic one.
It has an automatic shut on, it doesn't overflow.
We're dealing with, we're dealing with small gas fuel tanks, diesel tanks that we got to fill up. What do you think on that, Dave?
He'd want to work.
You think it.
That automatic nozzle is what he's, I guess, keep from.
From having the work.
Keep it from spilling. I think that's what I'd like, 15 gallons per minute.
Okay.
Both of them same, correct?
No, they're 299. I, I would, I would say the 300, no, 299 would be the one to go with.
Yeah, well, yeah, because even when I had talked, I talked to people who said they wanted to save the money, so they had gotten the manual, and then they were mad and went ahead and got the automatic anyway, because they figured it, you know, they were like, oh, I want to save money, but they didn't think it would make that much of a difference until you use it and you're filling equipment up, and next thing you know, your legs covered in fuel if you're not careful, so.
So can I make a motion to approve the two items that he had suggested, the 96 gallon tank and the.
Automatic valve.
Yep.
Okay, we have motion second. On paper, ready, ready, it's approved. And if this thing doesn't have the proper mount brackets, he needs to, he needs to be sure that that tank's secured properly in the truck.
Most of them got, placed the bottom down. The way I do mine, I haul mine up, I build up, and I love it, just leave it sitting there on the, keep from hauling it around. I keep mine at the house, and I wait and fill up every time I leave.
Well, you know, is it, is it, how durable is the underneath of it, as far as him picking it up with the buckets that went down in the shop?
Oh, they're, they're eight to nine thirty. Mine got hooks on it, she was hooked to it and lifted it off the machine and set it back on, whatever. Ain't got to haul that much in that truck, so it's.
Okay. All righty, it's approved, and we'll go forward. Review and discuss the preliminary paperwork pertaining to the upcoming Cherokee County SPOST intergovernmental sales tax agreement. That's number six B.
Seven B, too.
Seven B.
Okay. What you see following this is the same paperwork, pretty much generic, we would, all the cities get the same thing, it's the one that has been used in the past. There's been things filled in, let me see, I'm sorry, I should have, Nelson is one thing. First of all, it goes in section four, which is on page two. It's capital outlay projects, it breaks down the county's projects, and then next is Ball Ground, Canton, Holly Springs, Mountain Park. No, it's in alphabetical order, so we're on page three. And we do not need to use these categories, these are just the categories that were.
That we have left, huh?
Yeah, that were used before, so they kind of just kept them on there. And I have spoken to many a people with this, and we need to be careful, because the last two Cherokee County SPOST cycles, we were way too specific and limited ourselves on what we could use the funding, so that's why we're setting our funding that we really can't use, because it was, you know, you want to be, you want to, obviously, you don't want to be elusive as to what you're spending the money on. But you want to be careful, and, and you know, I asked Jeff, when we came up with ideas or whatever, you know, for, to, if he had to make sure that what we do, and also the auditor said she would help, like, you know, give her ideas and let her know, because she's worked with other cities that have had the same problem or whatever have you. And I've gotten advice from, you know, these other municipalities in terms of how they wrote theirs up. And so that we can make sure that we can use the money and to the best benefit. And if you look at the total estimated down there, on page three, if we went by population, our amount would be right around 500,000. The initial estimation, because they kind of, they rounded up to kind of make it fair for everybody, was 900,000, then we went to 700,000, and with some gentle pleading and discussion about how we didn't want to lose money, because we were going to do really good things with it, I got them up to a million.
Oh, so this million thirty-four is correct?
Yeah. Because what the problem is, is that it's, the SPOST, there's like a tier one, which is the big projects, like jail expansion or whatever have you, and then you have tier two, which are, they're not so necessary, a lot of times, they're the county-city combination projects, and then the city projects will be in tier three. So they also, that's also in the order they take precedence. So if they don't make enough money to do their tier ones, then the tier two and tier three suffer, if they, you know, it's kind of how it works out. But the county is swallowing a lot of the difference, so that we can get the fair amounts. The small cities, the three of us, Woska, Nelson, and Ball Ground, kind of really, when we removed some of the tier one projects, we really dipped down. Like I said, we went from 900, almost a million, down to, well, they're like 901,000, down to 700 and something like a thousand. I was not happy with that, but I wasn't going to argue it. I just, you know, I just asked if we could kind of look and see what we could do to make sure, because what happens when you remove those projects is the big cities like Canton and Holly Springs and Woodstock, they go way up, and then the little cities shoot way down, so the county agreed to absorb some of that, so that we can have, each of us can have fair amounts. That's the most we have gotten from SPOST cycles.
Okay, now this is a five-year SPOST cycle too.
Is it five or six?
Five.
I think this is six.
This is just the Cherokee County side, right?
Yes.
And Cherokee County can't be used in Pickens.
No.
I had heard someone.
Now, we're having an issue about that, that we need to look into.
Well, we need, we need to settle that, Laura. It's in either county.
I don't know off the top of my head, but that's something that.
Well, that's.
Because I, because I'd asked Jeff to look into that, because I was told that it was a county, it had to be.
Per county.
Yeah, per the county. So like the Pickens amount, the amount that we got for Pickens would be spent on Pickens, and then the Mountain Cherokee spent in Cherokee, and that's been a cross confusion thing, and the auditor also said we need to make sure on that too, because there has been some issues in other areas with, in other counties, with other municipalities, with, not that there's a whole lot around here that's split on two counties.
Well, there's not really that many counties or cities that are split by county line, but you know, once the funds becomes the City of Nelson's fund, it's up to the City of Nelson to see how it's spent. And we need to maintain every single road in the city, and we need to do everything we're supposed to do for the city.
I agree with you, that there are relations saying Cherokee County SPOST can only be spent in Cherokee County. Well, I've heard there was, I just want to make sure, just cover all the bases, because, you know, if you're screwing something up and we're spending things where we shouldn't be spending them, it can affect, you know, the amount of money we get the next time if we're misappropriating.
Of course, if we do it right, with the Pickens SPOST and Cherokee SPOST, we should be able to pave every single street in the city eventually.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's, because I'd, I'd heard that, and I can't remember where it was, that it was county by county, and just don't want to get in trouble down the line.
So when will you have us an answer back on that?
I can get something to Tina tomorrow, the next day, probably, if you need, if you need a quick answer. I'm looking in here to see if there's anything specifically in disagreement, but I haven't seen anything so far.
And maybe I'll do it.
So some ideas that we could obviously spend money on, you know, if you all want to come up with that, roads and streets, you know, either way, we always can use money for roads and streets. We could also do something, if you wanted to work on, you know, do like a, the community center area on brand scale, we could say something like government buildings. And if we do it that way, then it does not restrict us into what we can do with the building. Where now, in order to use the SPOST funding that we currently have, it has to be labeled as a community center, which gives us restrictions. If we, see, see what I'm saying, like, it's ever so slight, the wording, which is what's holding us back in how we can go ahead and spend this money. And I want to make sure that we get the best use and do the most benefit to the city. So that's something, because I had looked into that, and instead of listing it as like parks and rec or whatever, we do a category of government buildings that doesn't restrict us to what we deal with the building. So that's an option, just a thought, some ideas I came up with.
Anybody else got any input on? Now, the equipment, we need to, we need to make it broad enough for if we have to replace, when Dr. Bus last time, they said, well, you can't buy a mower out of it.
Well, we'll look into it and figure out how we can work that to make sure we can cover a wider base instead of limitations on what kind of equipment we can purchase for sure.
And of course, we need to be able to try to keep the park and recreation in it, or in a broad description. Anybody else have any input into it?
So like I said, if y'all want to take a look at this and let me know, I'll put it, you know, we can come up with something, and this is, this paperwork here, which I, I didn't know how to hole punch this, which is why it's folded, because it's just one of those awkward shapes, but this is the breakdown, kind of gives you the idea of how much, it's the budget for how much they are anticipating coming in, per capita by jurisdiction, population as percentages, it just kind of all breaks it down, and bear in mind here, this Nelson number of 673, it's because it's only taking into consideration the residents on the Cherokee County.
Cherokee County.
Yeah.
So you have definitely got that addressed, right?
With what?
With, with, with the commissioner of the Cherokee County. And you said they have upgraded this to a million?
Yes.
And that was thanks to Tina's persuasion.
I had to wait until I got into my car and drove away, got to a red light and did my little shimmy, because I was so excited.
We need to compliment you here, and show your, show our appreciation for you over there. That's definitely some good.
So the main project is, in terms of tier one, is jail expansion, just to let y'all know, and we're at max capacity. And with population growth, of course, you're going to have everything growing, whether it be people in jail or whatever have you. When they did the expansion from the old jail, and there, you would probably know what year that was, I don't, they did take into consideration by making the hospital ward big enough, the cafeteria, the kitchen. So basically, what they have to do now is add dormitories, because they've had to the point where there's a certain percentage over a population where the state steps in, and then the state charges you, takes the prisoner or the inmates, takes them into state custody, and then charges the county, and it's something like $10,000 or $11,000 a day they charge.
No, it's not like that. Like, right now, they have already, at one point last week, they, they served notice on the cities that they couldn't take their prisoners down to Cherokee County Jail. So they put all the cities in the scramble, figure out what we're going to do to these guys that really need to be locked up. And they had 700, I think their capacity is 708.
512.
Yeah, I mean, what they, what they, even, they can, they can.
Yes, I believe, I'm sorry, yes.
An overage up to like 708, and 709, they can't take. So what, what Sheriff Reynolds did, he notified the cities that were at capacity or overcapacity. And of course, what he's probably doing is putting pressure on the county, is, oh, look, you're going to have to deal with this, and you are. In my personal opinion, they ought to be able to, I think they're talking about going up to 1,200 or something like that.
Yeah, they're more than doubling capacity.
But they ought to go like 2,000 or something like that, because I just hope they got room enough to, we're not going to have to, to start all over again.
Yeah, some of the money from the current SPOST cycle is, there's money that they had started to set aside and forethought.
Yeah, they've got some engineering.
For like the engineering and the planning and stuff like that, so that this next cycle will take care of that. But that's, that's basically the main. And then other issues that they're dealing with was going to be courthouse expansion, but they took that, they, they pulled that way back. And then I think it was communications as well.
They, are they still going to do the communication changes as far as the.
Yes. They're running back and forth with, to get the best deal for, that'll benefit the most people in terms of not only the county, but the municipalities, because the goal is, the, the cities don't speak to one another, the counties don't speak to other counties, the school system doesn't speak to, you know, there's the school police in Cherokee County, they don't, not, everybody is on their own thing, so whenever there's a situation, it's basically put the radios down, pick your cell phone up and start calling people, and that's of little benefit to, for safety, especially in this day and age, where you never know what's going to happen.
Well, it's a traditional problem, everybody's got their own kingdom, they don't want anybody messing with it. That's the, the real problem with the situation out there, but, you know, they need to, they definitely need to expand it, because like I said, they, you know, they're, for South County, they could go up to New Jail and everything, so they've got room, so. And Cherokee, as a matter of fact, Pickens right now is housing 60 or something like that from Sandy Springs.
Yeah, they have made an agreement or something.
You don't always get the cream of the crop when they, when they house one out, you know. Of course, now the sheriff, you know, he, he's going to watch it pretty closely, he's got a lot of the lime, and send the real, you know, the real rough ones, but it's a constant battle. So I guess we need to, it's really not voting at them as far as.
No, just, I want y'all that you can just take the paperwork home, just make a scratch of, some things down, some ideas that you may have, projects, if you have any questions, give me a call, drop me an email, whatever have you, and I can, I can go ahead and ask the questions and get a picture there.
You, the power company out here, or even the underground, have you heard any company in the power company about?
The power company said they would be willing to move their poles. TDS said no. They said that don't move them when they fall. Like, they're just not, they're not, they said it's not cost effective for them to move the pole, although, the one here on the corner doesn't have much to go, it's hit one or two more times and it'll go down. Not on purpose, let me just preface that, it's not getting hit on purpose. It's just that when, you know, I mean, it's, it's difficult, not, I mean, not just for Evan's trucks that he's getting by, but even just, I mean, if a truck or something, or a car, and there's somebody over here, and there's somebody trying to turn this way, these people have to back up for them to get around there, it's kind of a very, very sharp turn there. So it would be a benefit to try to move that over and make it a better.
Well, I bet with the phone company, and your phone, phone company is in Minneapolis, so, Men's Soda, so.
Yeah, because I had called them to contact them and let them know that the pole had gotten hit again, number one, number two, it's rotting, it's rotting out all along the bottom, just to let them know, so it doesn't fall, because with all the rain we've had, they weren't interested. They said they'll, they'll fix it when it falls, is what I was basically calling. But everybody else was willing to be cooperative, all the power companies, ETC pretty much leases theirs on other people, and they're like, if they're ripping it, we're going with them, so. I'll continue to try to work on that.
Thank you. Okay, next we have review and discuss the preliminary 2018 fiscal year budget. That's out of number seven C.
All right, there are, there's a summary behind that page, and then it's just a bit of explanations on the budget. And then their first stapled together version is. of explanations on the budget. And then their first stapled-together version is how we've been operating now without a police department. And then the second stapled-together packet is a budget with the police department. So either way, we're covered. Let's see. They were adjusted, but the figures were calculated based on prior years, as well as research into possible increases, decreases that may occur for various reasons. Most reasons, most amounts were rounded off, since there's no real benefit to have the numbers listed to the penny, when amendments to the budget may likely occur during the year. The public hearing for the budget is set to occur at the next words session, which is Thursday, June 15. And copies of these budgets will be available for review. Of course, if there's any questions or concerns, I'm available to meet in person, speak on the telephone, or via email. And we'll be glad to work with everyone until we get to a point where we're ready to move into the new fiscal year. And then, like I said, the summary basically explains that there's two budgets here. There's, the differences is, the one without a police department has a contingencies line item, as well as a line item for reserves, which we're supposed to be building up. There is also a section on this version where the Cherokee County fire tax is listed, along with the municipal services agreement. I understand that we have not approved this, so I'm not jumping forward. It was just something I figured I could, I would kick in there for a visual perspective. But I wanted to show that even with an estimate on the high side, we still save a lot of money, and we would not have to budget money for the building department or planning and zoning with the, except for the possibility of some small exceptions here and there. And note that I went ahead, even though the agreement was listed at 11,000, I believe, once we take off the fire part and the alcohol part, that would take it under 10 significantly. But I left it at 10, just because it was a nice big fat round number. The one with the police department had no room for contingencies, and only enough room for a much smaller amount to go toward reserves, not reserve police, that is, the reserve fund, I'm sorry. The municipal services agreement was removed, and the monies for the police, as well as municipal court, were accounted for. We will also need to add back into the budget money for the building department, as well as planning and zoning, which would more than likely drain any chance of a reserve. I need for everyone to understand that while we do bring in money for fees and fines for tickets, most of the money goes right back out without any real benefit to the city. Police are not meant to be a money-making venture regardless, but it seems that some feel that the city has made an exorbitant amount of money in the past, but have not regarded all of the various state and local agencies that get their share. Just to give you an idea, approximately 40% of what comes in goes to other agencies right off the top. So I need us to look at revenues and expenditures, because I spent a great deal of time sprawled out on the floor with piles of paper everywhere, looking at past years where we've had the police. And one year, I believe, we took in $11,000. So I took, I think, when I went and looked at the fees, 40% of that had to go to agencies. And that's like your retired police officer, your abuse victims, the jail fund, there's a bunch of funds that have to be paid. And then in that year, there was, I took that money in, but a lot of it had to be refunded, because the cases were dismissed or were reversed based upon complications or issues with the, the cases. So it's just, this is the first presentation. Obviously, y'all probably haven't had much chance to look at it. Down here, I broke it into revenues. I tried to include the page numbers to give you an idea of where things were. There may be some things that I did not include on this explanation list, because I was so fried that I have budgets flowing around in my head nonstop. But I tried to, and then a column for, a column for expenses as well.
Yes, Mike?
I'd like to fry you a little more.
Go ahead, fry away.
I appreciate the budget explanations that, oh, we only got tonight.
Yeah, because I was still, I was still explaining, I was still...
But what I would like to encourage you to do would be to take it a little bit further in the explanation of the budget, and to give us a little, just like you've done here, a little narrative. Anywhere where any changes, say over 10%, benchmarked against last year's fiscal year 2017 budget.
Okay.
So if there, you know, some, just explain, you know, and little things we don't need to bother with. But there, like, there's some brand-new categories in here that I've never seen before. And there's some switching around of how stuff is. And frankly, I was a little lost myself, and I hadn't been doing it for a week. I'd fry it being one day.
Well, and like I said, some of the things, I think that we tend to, as creatures of habit, we tend to do things the same way, just because that's the way they were done before us. And we have a little changeover in the past couple of years in terms of, of doing this. So, I mean, I can change things back. I just really wanted to take the research and, and, and flow with it, and see what we could do to make improvements. That's also why I tried to, this is the information in Excel versus, which is what some of the other cities do versus what our software prints out, because it's just, it's, it's not as, as nice.
No, it's fine. There are just things, some numbers in there, and they just needed an explanation of that.
Okay, yeah, you all can do that. Like I said, I was just trying to make sure I got everything in here, so I wanted to at least get you all some to start.
You got some big pieces here, I think, kind of organized.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think it shows a lot of effort on your side.
Thank you. Thank you. I was proud of it. I was. Stacy and I did a dance, and there was no cameras. We did not dance in front of the cameras, but we were dancing.
Okay. Well, moving along here next, we'll have the public appearance.
Laura Keller, 1000, found ball run prime, Nelson. Since we and the audits didn't have credit to all the good stuff you've been discussing, for the sake of transparency, I will suggest that you send out your proposed budget, like on your email list, so that those in the neighborhood have been shown interest in the city before, will get a chance to look at that.
Yes, sir, I have copies. I just, I was a little iffy about how we had done that. And the paper that Jeff had given me in terms of step-by-step process generally says that the council gets first, I hate to say first dibs or first presentation, but I have a bunch of hard copies, if anyone's interested. And of course, I can email them out as well. I have them saved, so.
Particularly, like your spreadsheet, showing the different categories and what funding is. Some of the budget junkies will enjoy looking at that. And that'll make us better prepared outside of the state of the public hearing. Concerning your SPOS questions, I think Mike may be, shed some light on this, but I think at one time, the Cherokee County manager agreed with us that the municipality can do those funds ahead where they want to, and that I have to be worried about county lines.
As long as it's within the municipality.
Yeah, within the municipality.
Incorporated offices.
Because, you know, good examples...
And there's already a bunch of precedent, that's what we've done.
That's what we've been doing for years now.
Yeah.
And a good example is, you're not going to charge the kids from over here to go over and play at a playground just because it happens to be in Cherokee County. You know, that's a good example of why it's just going to be feasible to even consider dividing yourself from county to county. So I think we've already won that. So if you want to turn that rock over again, have at it. But I think you gotta go...
I'm not going to turn the rock over. My point was, we can spend it wherever the city intends to spend it.
I was wanting to, I had just heard that you had to do it by county. I can't remember who...
I think that's...
I, I...
But she's going to check with Dale to make sure.
You know, I just, I mean, just because we have been under investigation of things that happened previously, and it's kind of just, you know, moving forward, just making sure everything is above board, and things are done correctly. And I, I have a feeling it's probably done right now. But, you know, I would rather know for sure versus doing something I shouldn't be doing.
But I know we, we went under that assumption for a number of years. I remember James was involved in some of the things you could do at the playground, because you couldn't spend money in one county and not the other. And here, a few years ago, the ruling came down of like, yeah, you can, you can do it as a city. So, but if, you know, you can't over-coordinate to make sure you're right. I'm not saying don't coordinate, but I'm saying that we've already been told how to do it, and we can do it that way. So if you want to reinforce that, fine.
Yes, but I just wanted an answer, just to make sure that it didn't mean that, right? It's not, you know, digging a hole and trying to cause problems unnecessarily. But curiosity more than anything.
On the SPOS, again, I remember the very first SPOS, within that, we could have built a whole new city hall. And we bought this building. So it, I think we're at a point where this building needs serious attention due to the foundation and things like this, that we should definitely request that city with municipal structures be a part of this SPOS, so that we, if we had to do a major foundation correction on this building, or even if we needed to expand it for some reason, it would be within the parameters, you know, within the SPOS. And...
I think that's what Tina was going to add, what you were saying, is to broaden the, I mean, because you're right, it's like you get pinned down where you can't use the money.
Yeah, if you get, the reason I brought it up is because in, like, the very first SPOS, they were talking about, do we want to build a new city hall, or do we want to buy an existing structure? So within the first SPOS, it had to do with buying and improving your city halls within the cities, which that was not in there for the last couple of SPOS, were limited to the three categories. So, again, at one time, if we're going to hurt the ass, but if we're going to stay in the garbage business, maybe you can even buy a garbage truck from a dent the next SPOS, if you can get it in there. If you ever need to do it, you got it. But if you don't, you'll be...
Oh, you need to brawl with us, or, or...
But if you need to get some categories, you know, like improving municipal buildings, we don't have anything like that now within the existing SPOS. So to get it in there, then the time comes that we have some known issues here that...
Remind, Laura, it's funny that you mention that, because I had been looking back through the past SPOS agreements, and I found the first one where it said city hall. And I was so excited. I'm like, look, we have money, we can fix city hall. And then I was like, no, that one's all done. Oh, wow. But I do, that, that's, that wasn't the, I think, the first Cherokee County one it was?
Yeah, they had 400,000 targeted for a building. We went ahead and did this and diverted the other one, the other things. Of course, a lot was spent on this building and then the improvement. But it was a lot less than 400,000. And just thought I'd throw a couple ideas concerning the SPOS.
Appreciate your input, Laura.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to put in some input? Okay, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Okay, motion second. All right, ladies and gentlemen.